Thank you, Rob. I'll call this meeting, the committee, the whole to order. Is there any declaration of interest related to any item on this agenda? Not seeing one. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Not seeing any. We have three delegations here this morning. The first is Mr. Lloyd Lewis. He's here to speak about road safety in Gray Road One. Mr. Lewis, are you here? Oh, there he is. Come on ahead, sir. Come on up to the podium. Welcome.
Good. You can, can you hear me? I have a tendency to sort of wander, so if I do that, you tell me you can't hear me. Uh, thank you for allowing us to speak. Uh, my name is Lloyd Lewis, and this is Fred Sheal, and we're going to present uh, Safety on Gray Road One. We're here to save lives. This is a challenge. We have 10 minutes to convince you that this is an important matter that needs to be dealt with promptly. And uh, let's see how it goes. Okay, here we go. Right, I pressed that button and there you go. So, this is about Gray Road One. Uh, it runs from Owen Sound to Wyerton. It's about 90 kilometers. Uh, most of it is very safe, um, but there's a specific area, and it runs along the water's edge, as you can see there. It is also called the Scenic Island Trail. Uh, the area of concern, though, is specifically this area right here. It is the eight-kilometer stretch from Owen Sound to East Linton. It is very, very busy, both with cyclists and with heavy traffic. So this is what we want to talk about. Now, so, "The goal of this deputation is to reduce the risk of a fatality between a cyclist and a motorist on Gray Road One by prioritizing road improvements and bicycle lanes prior to the scheduled 2030 completion date." Now, I actually stand maybe corrected because it probably won't be finished on 2030. It's scheduled to start on 2030, so it may not finish till 2031. That's six or seven years from now, and you'll soon see, we can't wait six or seven years. So, one of the reasons that you want to consider this is because uh, in this glossy brochure that you've created, uh, it says, it's a Gray County Climate Action Plan. It says on page 14, "Our goal is to increase multi-use roadways and bike trails." But what's missing on page 14 is the word "safe," and that's not there right now. Because it's all part of reducing climate change by mitigating and providing sustainable transportation. So what are the issues? So Fred's gonna take over for a little bit. No, I want the picture where you're riding with your saddlebags. Oh, it all comes in order. Okay. Okay, let's try that. It's not moving. Okay. Sorry, little technical glitch here. Not sure why. Uh, okay, let's try this. There we go. Okay. You want the one saddlebags?
Yeah, keep going.
Okay.
There's one. Okay, that one, that one's fine. Thank you. Um, so, uh, 3.75 meters. I want you to remember that number. So, in terms of uh, roadways, so this is Gray Road One, um, going up towards East Linton. Uh, my wife is on the bike, Lloyd is beside her in a car. Uh, if you look at the um, roadway itself, from center to the edge of the road, which is very hard to define, you have roughly speaking 12 feet or 3.75 meters. Now, I want to give you an idea of how uh, cyclists, a car, and a one meter of space works in that particular situation. If you look at a bike, so take a measurement of any bike, it takes up roughly speaking about 0.5 meters of the roadway at the edge. So now you go beyond that and you say, okay, under the Highway Traffic Act, a vehicle must give a car one meter of space. So now you're into 1.5 meters of that 3, uh, 3.75 meters of roadway. Then you take the average car, like Lloyd's car there or my van, which is roughly speaking about 2.25 meters wide. So you add all of that up, 0.5 meters, one meter, and 2.25 meters. Within the concept of that 3.75 meters, you've got it covered. Everything is good. As long as the car stays more or less towards the center of the lane. Now, that's in a perfect world. Now, you take this one step further, and I'll, I'll go to the next diagram here if I can. I want that road, the one, keep going up, up, we're going back.
All right, no, going forward. Do you want to go back?
No, I want to go to the picture of the roadway that's terribly.
Oh, okay, that one.
Nope.
Uh, the, the, one of the bend?
I know. Keep going.
Oh, no, you want that one?
No.
Okay, I'll, I'll let you play with it.
Which button am I pushing here?
Um, well, you can go back here or go forward here.
All right. I am. Ah, come on. Okay, you want to go back. Okay.
Okay, let's go back.
It's not, not working with my finger.
All right. Okay, and we're done. Thank you. Uh, now we're at the very end. Okay, let's uh, look.
It's like the worst picture of the site.
Okay, um, no, you're gonna have to go without.
Okay, it's not coming. Okay.
Yeah, oh, there you go.
No, keep going.
There you go, you're thinking.
There you go. Let's use that one. This one I used on my day. That one, yep. Okay, sorry about that. Technical glitch. Anyway, in a perfect world, as I was saying, 3.75 meters, if the edge of the road is in good, good condition, works fine. Now, this is part of the roadway up towards East Linton, and if you look at that, you've got a white line. You've got basically broken pavement all the way along. So if you take my scenario that I described of 3.75 meters now, in order for a bike to safely ride up that roadway, they have to encroach the roadway more. Say, let's say roughly by a meter, which shifts everything over by a meter. So now you're a meter into the other lane. So any car that's coming up behind you has a, a number of different choices. One of them being, you slow down and you wait until it's safe to pass, but you have to cross the center line. Okay, uh, sorry. Second of all, um, if you don't want to do that, uh, then, you know, you just, uh, you just keep going up the roadway as close as you can to the center. But now what you're doing is you're encroaching on that one meter of space that you, you're supposed to keep between the cyclist and the car. So that oftentimes happens, and that creates a very unsafe situation for both the biker and for the car. And then the whole thing is exacerbated by the fact that this road here is used by a lot of trucks, school buses, and of course, by motorhomes. So motorhomes generally are anywhere between a half a, the motorhomes and trucks are anywhere between a half a meter and a meter wider than an ordinary car. So you can just imagine what happens in that whole scenario. So, this makes this particular section of road that Lloyd pointed out incredibly unsafe. And uh, what we need to kind of deal with, I guess, down the road, is that we need to do something about this roadway, and we need to do something before 2030. So in conclusion, in terms of what I have to say is basically, we need to at least pave the shoulder. This is beyond the white line there by at least a meter, which brings everything back into a, a nice perspective. This is where cyclists can ride, and the car has that 12 feet of roadway. And I think we need to do it between, before 2030. We've already had an incident within the last three years on this roadway where a cyclist was struck, and they were off work for four months. And my prediction is, and I ride this roadway many times, uh, my prediction is that somebody else is gonna get hit, and somebody's gonna get killed. So, take that under advisement, please. Thank you.
I'd just like to read you an email, please. And that is, uh, this is from Deanne Holman. "I'm not a cyclist, but I wish to one day ride a bike to work. Keppel Sarawak School on Gray Road One. Right now, I would never feel comfortable due to the lack of bike lanes. I live in Balmy Beach." I've had several emails of support for this, and you can see from the back, the crowd that we have here of support. This is an email which I think you've all got a copy of from the Owen Sound Cycl Club, and I'm just gonna read just a little bit of it. They have uh, close to 100 members. And during the riding season, we may have as many as five groups ride per week using Gray Road One. A typical ride includes three groups of five or six cyclists riding about 35 kilometers. Now, they represent um, an important part of this, but only a small portion. Hundreds and hundreds of people ride this route, and so therefore, it's ridden thousands and thousands of times. Let's go to, okay, okay, everything's going fine. Okay, hang in there. Boom, boom, boom. Okay, okay, right. Uh, issue number four. This is a tally sheet, and on November the 7th, uh, I stood in the corner of 24th Street, uh, west and just north of the Eddie Sargent Parkway. And uh, I counted the number of cars that are on this road, uh, in between 4:30 and 5 o'clock, so a half an hour. And uh, the little dashes that you see on this are the cars, and the circles are trucks. So, I'm being a retired teacher. I've got a couple of quiz questions for you. Are you ready? Here we go. Quiz question, uh, number, um, number one. How many vehicles passed in front of me during that 30-minute period? Any idea? Well, here we go. Okay. 406 vehicles. That's approximately 800 an hour going in that particular area to be shared with bicycles. 62% were northbound, and even more frightening, 38% were heading back into Owen Sound at 4:30. So you've got this mix, you know, which is dangerous. One-third of the vehicles were trucks, gravel trucks, pickups, you name it, okay? All wide vehicles. Here we go. How do you interpret this? Well, here's question number two. Are you ready? Imagine you are cycling for a one-kilometer route, just one kilometer. It'll take you approximately three and a half minutes. How many vehicles would pass off your left shoulder in that one minute? Any idea? Of course you don't, because it is alarming. It is this. 30 vehicles would pass in that three, three, three and a half minute section, right off your shoulder, because you have nowhere to go. And the third and final question. How many, at the same time, would be traveling the other direction, which doesn't allow the vehicles to move to their left, to swerve around you? So how many vehicles? And that would be 18. So it's, these are scary, scary numbers. Now, you say, well, this is at rush hour, but I've actually ridden on a Sunday morning from East Linton back into Owen Sound at this particular spot. And uh, 10 o'clock in the morning, you think it would be dead quiet, right? But it's not. It was, it was 40 vehicles flying off my shoulder at 80 to 100 kilometers an hour. It's intimidating. So, here we go. Now, actually, I'm, because of lack of time, um, I'm not gonna entertain you with the Lemon Theory of Disaster. So I'm gonna fly through this slide right now, but you can book me in at any time you want. Okay, issue number five, and the final one. And here is Gray Road One. It has many signs on it that look like that green one there, which says, "This is a cycle route." It is well advertised. It's advertised throughout the province, throughout the county. Uh, "Come to, come to Gray County and spend your money and cycle our beautiful roads." However, when accident happens, and it is going to happen, and I'm not being a fear monger, but based on statistics, it's going to happen in the next six or seven years, who is liable? Where will the fingers be pointed, um, when you're promoting the Scenic Island Drive everywhere? Well, the reality is, if you promote it, which the county does, then it's your responsibility to make it safe, surely. So to finish off, finally, okay, let's potentially save lives and human trauma, okay, by prioritizing Gray Road One. However, it's not gonna be straightforward, because we've got people saying, I can imagine, that, oh, this is already part of a 10-year plan. We can't, we can't change it. Of course, we can change it. We can change it, because it's made by us, so made by you. So it can be changed every year. That's not an issue. Whoop, let me go back. There we go. Next, they may say, well, we've got a limited budget. Well, we know, that's why you prioritize. What is the most important issue, the most dangerous issue, that we need to deal with immediately? And we say, it's this issue right here. And is it really that bad, the road, in terms of deterioration? Yes, it is. If you saw the pictures, if you were looking, you can see it is. And you can imagine in six or seven years' time, it's going to be shockingly bad, even, even more significant. And also, is it really that unsafe? Well, just look at the numbers of cars, and it's just not a good fit. And I ask you this, can you find a more dangerous road in the county than this? And I don't think so. So, we ask that you prioritize it. We ask that you uh, direct uh, your attention to staff and get them to move it forward. And if I was to turn and ask the crowd behind me and say, um, if they move it forward from 2030 to 2029, is that acceptable? And if they were to move it forward from 2030 to 2027, would you be happy with that? No, I don't think so. So, please, do whatever you can. We believe in, that this will save lives, and I hope that we've had an impact. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Councilor McQueen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks for your presentation. I guess a question of clarity, and I know that last picture, it showed East Linton. I know we've had a policy in our county of having paved shoulders for, I think, maybe 10, 12 years, maybe. Has part of that road been constructed and part of it hasn't been? Because I see in that last picture, it does look like a paved shoulder in that section, but other sections, so it doesn't look like it has a paved shoulder. So, I don't think I can get clarity on that, but on that, what is that new standard of width of that new policy? Because I know there were some numbers shown up here, so.
Maybe I'll ask Pat to respond to that. Sure, come on up to the podium, Pat, please, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you. Uh, through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I just have a few comments to make here. Um, so of the 877 kilometers of road the county has, we have 259 kilometers of fully paved shoulders. And 231 of partially paved, where maybe, uh, it wasn't on the cycling trails master plan, or we couldn't get the full 1.2, which has now changed to 1.5. But I guess, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, we believe in paved shoulders, and we are behind them, and we have been for a long time. Um, and this, this to me is, it's, it's not a question of whether we're on the same page, because we are. It's just a scheduling issue for us. So, um, I guess one thing I did want to mention it is, aside from uh, uh, groups uh, calling us and talking to us, which is fantastic, um, and some strava data that uh, tourism has, we don't really know exactly where all the cyclists are. Um, you know, we have staff observations. Obviously, there's a lot in the Blue Mountain. There's obviously some on one. Um, but there isn't really, we don't really have a metric on how that fits into our, 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 our road reconstruction. Because our practice has been, uh, to add them to the road when it's scheduled for construction. So, um, in this case, in the 10-year plan, as, as Lloyd said, it is 2030. Could it be 27 by the time it gets there? I guess no one here is happy with that either, but it's not always 2030. So that is kind of our living document. So, uh, in the slide presentation, there was a lot of localized deficiencies. Now, we do, um, go out with the Owen Sound Triathlon Group every year. They give us a list of, of some hotspots. We do some repairs, just to make sure that there's not gonna be any issues. But again, the majority of that road, compared to some other roads we have, the paving addition is a lot better than other ones, like it just is. Um, that being said, if there's no cyclist on that road, should there be a metric to move it up? Um, because, you know, there's 40 to have for that road. So 4,887 cars. And I've said this for a long time, uh, Mr. Lewis's point, um, that that's a lot of cars going by a cyclist. And uh, someone driving by, um, every day, over the course of, of, of your lifetime or your working career, is it inherently dangerous activity to just drive a bike on any road? Sort of. Um, so you gotta make it as safe as you can, and that's what we're attempting to do. And like I said, in this case, the lowest PCI is between Old Beach Drive and 17A, so that is lower than the other ones. But again, it's, it's difficult and expensive for us, um, to do a short section and/or to just do a paved shoulder. It would be quite cost prohibitive, so, um. And then, and the other question is, what road do you not do? Should this take priority over Waverly Heights, say, or should it take priority over another railroad where there's Mennonites? So that's kind of where we struggle, and it, it's not that we don't think the road would, would benefit from being resurfaced and completed. Um, it's just that if you do, if you do a full reconstruction of a road before its time, in theory, you're, it's gonna cost you more money than you would have saved, because you're always doing every road sooner. Um, but whether there's a, a, another report that comes back to committee, going a little more into the intricacies of the, of the paved shoulder program, um, because we do believe in it, like I said, and we've put a lot in, and we're gonna continue to do that. Um, it's just a matter of, um, when something falls in a window, is there people that aren't happy with it, and, and that's hard for us to know exactly when we want to move something to, because it does cost money, right?
Okay, thanks, Pat. Appreciate that. And again, thank you, Mr. Lewis, for your time and your presentation. It was, uh, well researched, and, and the crowd, thank you for coming today. Thank you very much. Councilor Greg.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I did have a question for the director as well. Um, just for further insight for everyone that's in the room, uh, the capital budget of 10 years is a document that's 1,547 pages thick. Uh, so there's no lack of capital requirements across the entire county. My question to the director is, in the 2023 to 2032 capital budget, it was $1.8 million forecasted for this project, and the timeline was 2020, uh, 2027. For the '24 budget, it did back up to 2030, and the price tag went to $3.4 million in the projection. Uh, can you just speak to why it dropped three years? And what might have instigated that kind of increase in the cost? Um, and also further to that, it's not, it can't be just due to the roads exchanges, because we've really just undertaken that this year. And for further information, some of the urban down road portion, the Gray Road One within Owen Sound, it kind of has now in the last couple of years, sat on our municipal unfunded list, uh, for work down the road, but we have no funding identified to, to tackle such work to the northern limits. And, and that's coming, uh, as that roadway gets downloaded to the city. But can you comment on that, uh, drop of three years, please?
I will say, this is, this has happened to a few other roads as well, the Gray Road Four, like, to the detriment of, of people that want to see the road constructed, it's a really well-constructed road. I think it was originally done with a cold in place, um, and this keeps happening with Gray Road Four, where we have it in the program, but it was built by MTO. It's such a well-built road that it kind of keeps holding up, at least, you know, the majority of it. Um, so it tends to fall down the system as other roads that are maybe only 40 mils of asphalt tend to fall apart quite quickly. So, it seems like these, these bigger roads, some, some of them with higher traffic volumes, were built correctly in the first place, and they tend to shove down the system. So that does happen quite frequently. And I know, I know, you know, especially for a group that really wants to see it moved up, it's bad enough that it's coming five years away, to see that become seven or eight is, I would imagine, very frustrating.
The cost piece, Pat?
Uh, usually the cost just, they usually, well, increase over time for one, and as we get more details um, on our paving structure and stuff, they, they will probably increase as well, so depending on what's there, so. The scope might change slightly through the 10-year plan as we go. Usually, the closer drops will move on a little more detail.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, let's, uh, we'll move on to our next delegation. Thank you, Pat. Thank you again, Mr. Lewis, and the gentleman that spoke with you. Stephanie Keating is here from the Nuclear Innovation Institute, The Climate Project. Welcome, Stephanie. The floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Um, my name is Stephanie Keating, and I'm the Director of Environment at the Nuclear Innovation Institute. And I'm here to talk to you today about a resource that we call The Climate Project. So first, let me, uh, set the stage with a bit of context. The world is saturated in news and information about the perils of climate change. From a steady stream of scientific studies to daily climate-related news, this global scale can make the issue feel less tangible and less urgent. This is just a selection of, uh, some headlines, some recent headlines on climate change. Uh, there's a clear need to make climate change information relevant to this region and share what it means for where we live. So, that's why we created The Climate Project. This project is funded by Bruce Power and supported by the Nuclear Innovation Institute. The Climate Project aims to localize research and scientific knowledge on climate change for people in this region, those in Bruce, Gray, and Huron Counties and local indigenous communities, all located within the Saugiy Nojibwe Nation territory. We aim to provide actionable intelligence on what a changing global climate could mean for where we live. The information is presented on a dynamic website full of impactful visuals, videos, and accessible text. Research comes from qualified sources in academia, conservation authorities, municipal, provincial, and federal governments, local indigenous knowledge, industry partners, NGOs, and more. Uh, some of the groups we've talked to include the Maitean Valley and Gray Salble Conservation Authorities, the San Environment Office, the Historic Saugiy Meati, the Lake Huron Coastal Center, and much more. The information is presented as a story told in three chapters. So the first chapter is air, where we talk about rising air temperatures, air quality trends, precipitation and drought, extreme weather, uh, forest fires, and how they impact the region. So I'll just highlight a couple of pieces of data. For example, our beloved winter traditions may be on thin ice. Over the past 30 years, so from, uh, about 1991 to 2020, Gray Bruce has seen a median of 64 days per year where the temperatures are below zero all day. So these are called ice days. Uh, according to some projections, which are drawn from Climate Data Canada, in the most intensive warming scenario, this may drop to only 14 days per year with temperatures below zero. So that's by the turn of the century. These days might not be sequential, which means that things like ice rinks, um, our lakes freezing over, and, you know, even maybe building snow creatures that last for longer than a couple day, a couple days, maybe things of the past. The water section contains information on water temperatures, ice cover, shoreline erosion, aquatic ecosystems, invasive species, and much more. Uh, most of it to do with Lake Huron. So, for example, we talk about ice cover. Uh, Canadian and American scientific agencies have been making detailed observations of ice cover on the Great Lakes since 1973. Between 1973 and 2018, ice cover on all Great Lakes has seen a general decrease, with Superior, Huron, and Erie losing ice cover more quickly than Ontario and Michigan. In 2021, uh, sorry, from 1973 to 2020, Lake Huron had about 64.6% ice cover, and that has dropped to 48.3% in 2021. What does that mean? Well, this seems particularly relevant in the next couple of days. Um, this is one of the key ingredients for, uh, increased lake effect snow. So, you need a warm, unfrozen lake, and then some masses of cold air blowing in, uh, over top of the lake. And the end result is quite a bit more, uh, shoveling and impacts on our roads and infrastructure, to name a few. It also increases the risk of shoreline erosion. So, uh, this is, um, these are some images of shoreline erosion in saugy shores in 2020. A lack of ice cover coupled with high water levels, strong winds, and high waves is a recipe for a great deal of increased erosion. Finally, the land section covers forest health, agriculture in growing seasons, wetlands, rivers and streams, watersheds, and diseases and pests. So, our community's forests, um, are a huge part of life in this region. From ecotourism, locals getting out to enjoy nature, and industry, um, it's a big part of our lifestyle here. These are just a few images from the Bruce County Museum's collections dating from the late 1800s until the mid 20th century. The Climate Project discusses how forests are impacted by climate change, including factors such as invasive species and water usage. One of the things we highlight are the watershed report cards that have been produced by, um, our conservation authorities. So this is, uh, an example of forest health from Saugiy and Conservation. And, uh, there's a variety of different ratings, so a lot of them are excellent or good, but we have a couple that are in poor condition. And here's another example from, uh, the Gray Salble Conservation. We, throughout the site, we spotlight local organizations and ways to get involved, uh, at a very local level. So, organizations that we've highlighted, including Alice, who does great work on, um, farmland restoration, the Saugiy Nojibwe Nation Environment Office. The Saugin Ojibwe Nation Environment Office, the Lake Huron Coastal Center, Conservation Authorities, as I mentioned, and many more. So why does this matter? The Climate Project can provide decision-making support. With up-to-date and localized information, The Climate Project can help inform policy and planning decisions that address climate risks. It can also serve as a community resource for directing concerned citizens to The Climate Project for specific information on how climate change is affecting. Neighborhoods, communities, businesses, and the environment. Council and staff can use The Climate Project as a reliable source of data for informed decisions on climate policy. A resource for educating and engaging citizens on local climate issues. And a platform to share local climate adaptation, mitigation, and sustainability efforts. So I encourage you all to check it out at climateproject.ca, and also if any of your municipalities have. Great resources that you'd like to see featured, I'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Do any counselors have any questions? You must have done a really good, well, you did do a really good job. Oh, Counselor Apples, go ahead.
Thank you, Stephanie. When you're talking about the conservation authorities, just find it on that graph. A little confusing. You'll see that Solgin, in the upper part of the North Solgin. And in Aaron Eldersley, it's excellent to good is the way it's rated for Solgin in that area. And yet, when you get to the. Next one. It's rated as poor. I just don't get how we go from one line to the other line, you step over, and the watershed becomes. Poor from excellent. Am I questioning the conservation authority's. Way of doing things? Yes, I am.
Stephanie?
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. I can't comment specifically on the forest indicators here, but I do know that each conservation authority does list the metrics. By which they address the forest health indicators. And so. I could look those up and we could have a conversation about that offline if you wish.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Stephanie. I truly appreciate your, your time today and your presentation. Thank you. So we have one final delegation this morning. Annette Pedler is here from Safe and Sound. She's going to be speaking about feasibility assessment for emergency shelter and a letter of support, so. Good morning, Annette, and welcome.
I'll sound better with it off, I promise. Good morning. My name's Annette Pedler, and I'm the proud Executive Director of Safe and Sound. I'm here today to provide counsel with an update about our first year of the county-funded overnight warming center pilot. Provide you with more information about a feasibility study we completed that confirmed the need for increased beds in our emergency shelter system. And provide you with more context and a path forward towards ending homelessness in the area. Outside of providing some education, my goal today is to receive the council's support through a letter for an upcoming Reaching Homes grant. For capital funds that would go towards securing a shelter facility. For those of you who don't know, Safe and Sound is a drop-in center in the downtown of Owen Sound. It was started in two thousand seven and has undergone significant transition over the last almost twenty years. As the need or acuity level of our participants has increased, so has the need for our services to professionalize. This shift has meant that it was, that it's time for us to update our strategic plan. And in order to do so in an informed way, we received funding through the federal government, through the Community Services Recovery Fund. For both a feasibility study and an updated strategic plan. This fund was administered locally through the United Way. One of the main takeaways that I'd like you all to come away from this delegation today is the, the fourth point on this slide. And that it's that our, our community is in a crisis, not just of an opiate and housing, but it's also one of developmental services. I don't think that the general public appreciates how many of our participants have a disability, and employment is not the end goal for everybody. Between seventy, forty to seventy-five individuals access Safe and Sound services every day. It's not just people who are homeless, but also people who are living in precarious situations and in the margins of our communities. I'd like to be very clear about this next point. The vast majority of our participants have significant ties to Gray and Bruce Counties. This is corroborated through the data that the county staff collects through the by-names list. And we also asked every participant over a one-week span over the summer where they went to high school. And ninety-four percent of those individuals had attended high school in Gray or Bruce Counties. Over seventy-five percent of them were in Gray County. My personal aha moment about this came after I'd already been the Executive Director at Safe and Sound for a year. And I was walking in the downtown of Owen Sound with my mom, who is a teacher at the same elementary school as me. And we passed a participant who is somebody who is there every day, and she said, you know him. And I said, oh, how did you know that? And she said, well, you went to school with him, grade six, grade seven, and grade eight. And guess what? He was in the special education unit. And it told, it just hit me in that moment that the division in our community starts so early that. I'd never even been given the opportunity to know anything about even the person's name, their life and aspirations. You really all do have connections to people who are homeless in our community. There are people who went on leave from work after a death in their family and they never came back. There are people who never came back to your soccer team after an injury. They're your neighbor's kid, who you just never hear them bring, bring up anymore. They maybe used to be your doctor. This other narrative is a politics of convenience and reflective of a lack of understanding of the reality of the situation. Also, the fact that the majority of our participants on Ontario Works or Ontario Disability Support reflects that homelessness is an income issue. Also, you might hear me say that we are a service. Helping and serving is only the byproduct of what we do. We exist to facilitate people's basic human rights. People in Canada have had the right to food since nineteen forty-eight, so we serve breakfast every morning with the support of O Share and Salvation Army through the Gray Bruce Food Share. The United Nations General Assembly declared water and sanitation a basic human right in twenty-ten. We have two bathrooms and a shower with toiletries for individuals. Access to the internet, that's been considered a basic service by the federal government since twenty sixteen, and so we have computers for individuals. That's what this service is about. It's about facilitating a basic right. So, last winter, we, was our first year of a two-year pilot program, which we received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Gray County. I'll get into more details later about the, exactly what the service model of a warming center is. But this initiative was targeted at going, getting unsheltered community members off our streets at night. As is demonstrated in this graphic, we averaged above capacity throughout the, throughout the winter. This was possible only because people didn't stay the whole night. Also, you can see in our daily visitors that we have a lot of people during the day, and that's reflective of how many people, first of all, access our, our services who are not homeless. And also how many other service providers come to Safe and Sound to meet their, their clients there. So we have staff daily from the hospital, from community living, from Canadian Mental Health Association, who come to Safe and Sound to meet their folks there. The hospital was able to provide us a comparison chart about the visits to the Emerge Department last winter in comparison to the same five-month period the previous year. In total, there were seventy-one less visits to the Bright Shores Emergency Rooms by homeless individuals. This does not account for the fewer admissions. Homelessness is very expensive in our community, in any community. As the, as a government, you have to pay for it in one way or another. You pay through increased policing, parks departments, hospital visits. Or you prevent, you fund preventative measures such as that it's safe and sound. So far this year, we've been noticeably busier. We've had multiple nights in the first weeks where we've had to turn away more than five people because we've been at capacity. This data from the pilot program corroborates the data that we collect, that was collected through the J Consulting Group's feasibility study. The study determined that an additional twenty-eight-bed low-barrier facility is required in Owen Sound. The data used to inform this study was provided by Gray County Housing, Safe and Sound, and Moawikwadong Friendship Center. The consultants did interviews with Gray County staff, community partners, and participants. The report suggested that a purpose-built facility would be best, would best meet the needs of the community as a whole. And it would have an estimated cost of two point nine six million dollars. We will discuss again different models next, but certainly the possibility of purchasing an existing building and completing the necessary modifications. Could provide a lower-cost path forward. The county's own turnaway data and numbers recorded on the by-name list clearly demonstrate that this is, the need for this facility. Is not based on any future projections, projections. This is a need in our community tonight, and it's snowing. With the limited time in this delegation, I, I don't think that it's of much merit to further discuss whether or not this service is needed. And instead focus on what solutions are before us. If you don't think it's still needed, come to Safe and Sound tonight. There are several different models of shelter. That all have their advantages and limitations. The one that you all may be most probably familiar with is the motel model, which we have here through the Diamond Motel. The dignity that comes from, with the privacy of having your own space can be vital for people. Motels can limit vicarious trauma that comes from other, from others, and are fantastic in limiting the spread of contagious pathogens. Which is, of course, top of mind after COVID. Motels, though, can be very isolating environments, and this is especially true when there's not support staff available on a twenty-four-hour basis. Next is facilities that have private rooms and communal spaces, like the ones suggested in the feasibility study. Can be great at ensuring that some confidentiality is still maintained. Those facilities can be set up in a way that community and support is built in these, in those communal spaces. But people can still have a private space to retreat to if they're feeling overwhelmed, or if they feel like they need to remove themselves from it for any reason. These facilities typically are open for individuals throughout the day, meaning that they need to be staffed on a twenty-four-seven basis. Congregate sleeping models or more dormitory style are typically open for more limited hours, so like ten PM till eight AM. Which can reduce staffing costs and can reduce the impact of the facility to the neighbors. These types of facilities generally can fit more people, but they rely heavily on having a separate space that people can become connected to services throughout the day. This option does not provide people with the ability, though, to create distance between themselves and other service users. Finally, a warming center is what Safe and Sound is currently operating. There are no beds and people are not able to sleep, which is the most obvious limitation, and. Limitation isn't even quite the right word to describe it. It was a fantastic step that the county supported this initiative because it has quite literally kept people alive. But there's extensive research that outlines the impact of lack of sleep on an individual's both physical and mental health. Trying to also manage the behavior of individuals all day and all night, who are never able to have the lights off and quiet to sleep. Is a significant and unneeded complication for staff. Not letting people sleep and always having the lights on is not consistent with a supportive environment or dignified environment. I feel very strongly that our community needs to move away from this model of service delivery. No matter what service model is provided, all of these still are better than someone being unsheltered. If someone is outside and we don't know them, then they can't be supported in exiting homelessness. The individuals who are generally able to self-resolve their homelessness are not typically individuals who are chronically homeless or those who are living outside. And this speaks to one of the most common sense explanations as to how investing in these facilities do lead to the ending of homelessness. We need to know the people. Ending homelessness is the goal of all of what we're doing, and we need not be shy to talk about that. The last thing that I think that deserves an explanation is the terminology of low barrier. Any of the different models listed above can themselves be low barrier, and it is a way, but it's basically a way to talk about. Filters that a service provider is putting on their program to shape who they have, who they serve and in what way. Even though Safe and Sound is a low-barrier facility, there are still barriers that participants experience. The space we have is not designed in a trauma-informed way, with areas that people can be private, can be in private to decompress. And not be impacted as if they're having a tough go. The fact that our space creates barriers has very serious implications to the community around us as well as our participants. When everyone needs to be in one or two rooms at all times, we're not putting people in positions to be successful, and participants end up on service restrictions. These service restrictions have devastating impacts. I don't have a room full of people behind me today because they're in the next room, and they're at a debrief session. For one of our participants who died outside earlier this week. And it was the barriers in which Safe and Sound has that meant that that facility could not be appropriate for him. And he died a very preventable death. And that's not the social services and my burden to bear. That is all of our responsibility to understand where we're falling short. A couple of them skipped and still came. So what are our next steps and how will they be funded? Today's ask from council is for a letter of support for an upcoming Reaching Homes capital application that Safe and Sound is applying for. This grant is for five hundred thousand dollars and would be a significant chunk of the capital funding required if we were looking at purchasing an existing building. Reaching Homes is, Reaching Homes also has a grant for operational funding, which we've already applied for. This is up to a maximum of fifty thousand dollars a year. The ongoing cost of staffing will vary greatly depending on the model of service. And the gap between available, available federal fundraising and the operating costs actuals. Will be looked to be provided through Safe and Sound's limited fundraising abilities and county funds. As the county is the service manager, and essentially, I, sorry. As the county is the service manager for the area and distributes the provincial homeless funds. You're essentially acting as representation for also potential provincial funding opportunities. And it's my understanding that no municipally-level funds currently go towards homelessness program. And so this is certainly a self-limiting and potential funding paths. Gray County is a leader, and this council has been a leader in a lot of homelessness initiatives. The support of Fourteenth Street, the SOS team, both are wonderful examples of how our area is really truly at the forefront. Of solutions for rural communities. But when we only partially fund solutions, we only get partial results. And if, if we gave the fire department buckets and not hoses, we all wouldn't drive around the downtown wondering. Why there were so many buildings that were burnt down. We'd recognize that we've not put them in a position to be successful. And also, we wouldn't blame them, but that's what's happening now with services like Safe and Sound. We receive just enough funding to keep the lights on, but then shoulder the blame in the community for creating the problem. And this is where all of your leadership becomes so important. I believe strongly that we all have a responsibility to enact and advocate an action in the spheres of influence in which we hold. And all of you hold much more influence than most of the people that I speak with. And if, I say this to everyone, if your only solutions, though, are things that other people should do, then you need to revisit your solutions. If you, or if you think that the federal provincial governments need to be providing more funding for somewhere like Safe and Sound. Then please use your elected office to advocate for that. One of the, one of the participants knocked on my door. The, the second overnight this winter, and he asked me, she, sorry, she asked me if. I really believed that the elected people cared about them. And I said, oh, definitely. And then she said, but why won't they let us have a bed? And I was like, oh, what a question. How to, how to convey that I know that you all care very deeply about your, our community members. But we have to find a way to make them feel that and understand that. And we also need the humility to recognize when we have more to do and more to learn. And, and the leadership to then take this challenge on. So thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak today. As always, I'm always available to give a tour of the facility, and thanks again for your consideration.
Thank you, Annette, for all that you do for the community as well. Tremendous amount of work and compassion. Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Annette? Counselor Nielsen?
Thank you very much, Warden. I do have a question. So the grant you're asking for the letter of support on is the. The one that caught my attention was a five hundred thousand dollar capital request grant, and you mentioned the goal of that was to get a new space. I'm assuming larger and better equipped and such. Do you already have a space? In mind that you're working and negotiating on? Do you have that plan in place? And just my secondary question is. The applicant, like the, how much of that plan needs to be in place for the grant that you're applying?
Through you, Mr. Warden, I think that, yes, we do have a space. I don't think that it would be appropriate for me to disclose exactly what that is in open session. I don't think that, um, it would be appropriate for me to disclose exactly what that is in open session. Um, we could move to closed session to discuss that. Um, but basically with the Reaching Homes grant, you need to provide a sustainability, um, letter, which is basically like your plan. They recognize that you can't really be a grant for capital funding and also need to have the person have, already have the building. So there is some understanding that you don't have to already have the building for, um, to, to be eligible for the funds.
Thank you, Annette. So I, I think it would be appropriate at some point here to, if somebody felt strongly to ask for a motion to, uh, the county to provide a letter of support for the application. Dean, you're moving that? Second, Counselor DeBreen? Okay, very good. Any questions, further questions for Annette? Counselor Gray?
Well, it's not a question for the, uh, deputator, but thank you very much for coming here today. The question I would have, um, with the request and the support for it is I think about 15 years ago, there was another individual um, advocating for the county to support their at arms-length, um, shelter. And I'm just wondering, how does the county support some at arms-length service providers and say no to others? Like what, what is the decision-making process here that, that decides who, uh, benefits more so than, than other parties? And, and that's not a, a, a shot at, at the deputation here today. It's just county council has had this type of ask in the past. Um, how do we choose, um, who our providers are, our shared partners are?
And Marie has, uh, indicated that she might have some comments for that question. Ann Marie?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Um, Safe and Sound is a known entity to us, um, someone that we have funded and supported for a very long time. Uh, and, um, we know that there is the ability, um, the perseverance, um, and the capacity to undertake this model. Um, and in previous times, we've had, not had that relationship, um, nor the, the same feelings.
Counselor DeBreen?
Thank you, and through you, Warden. This is just a letter of support for the grant application. This isn't entering into any obligation at this point in time for financial support. Uh, it's, it's a letter saying that, that we believe in you. If that is what our motion is, I'm getting nods. Thank you.
That is certainly the intent of the motion here, and that was the request from the delegation. Are they correct, Annette? Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for your presentation and certainly support the motion on the floor. But, uh, even maybe a little bit to Counselor Greg's question or comment. There are a number of people that, um, don't have a roof over their head and living out of their cars or, or couch surfing and, and all different circumstances just because of the high cost of everything that's out there. And I know that, uh, other counties, Wellington County, working with a, a provider of tiny homes, I'm just following up on that. Builder of tiny homes in, in Wellington County in Tiveterdale. And so there's a lot of, we gotta look at all different kinds of solutions. And we actually, as a municipality, Grey Highlands, had a town hall meeting a week ago. Maybe some of those solutions is looking at what surplus lands we have as, as a municipality, whether it's county or lower tier, and maybe there's opportunities for different types of housing and that type of thing. But, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's in a critical situation, uh, across the board in the sense of there's a lot of people being affected. I just wanna make that comment, but I think we have to continue to look at all kinds of solutions.
Thank you, Paul. Annette?
Yeah, thank you for your comment, and through you, Mr. Warden. Um, we, we recognize that totally. And this, um, this is just one of the things on the spectrum of housing that's needed. Uh, we received a, a small grant from community foundations along with Moakudong Friendship Center, um, to this, uh, spring or this late, uh, late winter. Who knows with the presentation how long the winter will last, but, uh, in the springtime for, uh, uh, simple, a complete, community symposium on different types of housing projects of, so we're, we've invited different, um, individuals who have different tiny home projects in other communities to come and provide our community education on what's worked about those models, what, what they can and can't do, basically. And so that this plan is not exclusive to continuing to pursue those other options.
Thank you for that, Annette. Counselor Kentner?
Thank you, and through you, uh, Mr. Warden. Um, I was at the table in 2007, uh, the first group that recognized the need for, uh, a safe and sound, uh, location in, in downtown Owen Sound. And it has evolved over the years very much, and, and some of the evolution has occurred since I joined county council. So, uh, I, I, the, the needs are changing, crisis, you know, and moving target. And I'm, I guess my question is, I, I'm assuming that you would continue to, uh, the present premises and those, it would evolve, uh, over time, but right now you need housing, or at least, uh, uh, overnight accommodation, which I, and I'm not, it's totally clear on how that is different from what we're already doing. I just know for sure that Safe and Sound has been a good partner for Gray County for a long time. And, uh, I, I think there's merit in, uh, working with the people we know best and who know, who know our, our needs best.
So I can speak to, um, um, I can speak to maybe the, the piece about what is different about this model than, um, what the, uh, county is currently offering. And the big piece is, though, the lack of available beds. So the Diamond Motel and even when, um, the county is able to book their overflow rooms throughout the winter months, um, there's still over 100 people, um, in Gray County or who are homeless every day. And so it's not that the model of service isn't, um, doing its job for those people. It's just, it's not enough for the number of people who are requiring the service. And additionally, when we get back to the different, um, barriers that people experience, the motel doesn't work for everybody because not everybody can be in an isolated environment like that all night on their own. Um, or, um, so there's really a need for people to have 24-hour staffing support, um, that, that our current iteration of our program isn't, um, fully able to meet.
Thanks for that, Annette. Okay, very good discussion. I think I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. So we'll get that letter to you. Toot sweet. Thank you again, Annette, and again, thank you very much for all the work you, you do in the community. Thank you. Hey, let's, uh, let's take a five-minute recess. One minute warning. Thank you, Rob. That will bring the meeting back to order. First order of business after the delegations, uh, was the consent agenda. Uh, Counselor Body?
Thank you, uh, Warden Millen. If we could, uh, pull and discuss separately 6G for Gulf, being the Canadian Ontario Community Housing Initiative and Ontario Priorities Housing Initiative changes of that report. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else want anything else removed for further discussion direction? Okay, if I could have a motion to receive the items. Counselor Mackey, Counselor DeBreen, any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Moving on to matters that require direction and discussion is the, uh, report from planning regarding the centralized planning service model delivery. Someone care to move receipt of that? Counselor DeBreen, second by Counselor Body? Scott? Welcome, and Randy? We'll tag team on this one. Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Yeah, good morning, uh, Mr. Warden and, and members of council. Thanks for, for letting us address you today. Um, so yeah, what you have before you is a report, which is a follow-up from the September 12th report, which was a re- request for feedback on the potential centralized planning services model. Um, we have received a fair bit of feedback from municipalities. We've had some limited feedback from the public and developers too. Um, but what, what we wanted to do here today was, was share sort of very, very high level, um, some of the feedback we received and, and talk about next steps with respect to this project. So I'm gonna talk about some of the feedback received, and then Randy's going to get into, uh, some of the next steps in that regard. Uh, not surprisingly, um, we, we heard a lot of questions on this one, and, and that's what we were asking for at this stage. Uh, there were some, some comments and questions that we had certainly anticipated. Uh, and there were some very insightful comments that came from your councils and staff that, that led us down new rabbit holes of further investigation. So thank you very much to all the time that your staff and councils took in that regard. Uh, with respect to summary of some of those comments, um, certainly lots of questions about location of, of where, uh, planning staff would be located across the, the county. Uh, the importance of maintaining, uh, direct face-to-face customer service at each of your municipal offices. Uh, questions about the office hours that, uh, that you would have staffing there. Uh, there was questions and comments about, uh, office logistics, uh, between, uh, planning and, and some- planning and and some of your other municipal roles and departments in that regard. Things like operations, engineering, parks and rec, even your clerks departments. There was questions about some of those services that maybe your municipal planners are currently providing that might not be directly, you know, processing planning applications or zoning or official plan updates. Some of the roles that some of your municipal staff play on on heritage committees or supporting heritage or or other municipal functions. And so if there was to be a centralized model, what would that look like at the municipal level if if some of your planners were to to join the county team in that regard? Certainly lots of questions about the financials. What's this going to cost? What would it be to each municipality? How can we be sure across our nine very distinct municipalities that we have equity in a funding model in that regard? There was questions about what planning applications might cost in the new in the future under this model. Questions about staffing levels across the county, across each of your municipalities. How things like hiring would be done, how input will be received from municipal staff to say a county planner in that regard. Questions about the impact on local committees. What does this mean if you currently have a planning advisory committee? What does it mean for your committees of adjustment in that regard? Certainly, a number of the comments highlighted those future memorandums of understanding will be crucial if this project is to move forward to outline that service delivery relationship between the county and member municipalities in that regard. There were some questions and comments about what consulting might look like. So for for those municipalities that might already have a consultant on certain projects. Or maybe in the future, you're looking at an official plan update or other specialized study that needed a consultant. Lots of comments about Ontario Land Tribunal proceedings, how those would look in the future, legal resources. Billing in that regard as well as similar comments about agreements. So whether it be site plan agreements or development agreements or subdivision agreements. How would that look under a centralized model? There was questions about what what truly are the efficiencies and and if municipality X is processing applications at at this rate right now. What would those timelines be under this new model? Can you guarantee more expediency in that regard? There was questions about why why the county seemed to be laser focused on this all for one sort of model and were there other options available, including looking at a hybrid model, including maybe starting with some baby steps in terms of a pilot project. And then there was other general comments about the need to look further into some human resources matters. Some information technology matters and various other things. So overall, again, want to thank everybody for their feedback. Want to thank members of the public and developers that have given their feedback as well. And now I'll turn it over to Randy for his comments on on some potential next steps.
Thanks, Scott, for that. So on potential next step, so county staff recently met with municipal CEO group and and we provided them with an update on some of the comments and questions that Scott just just went through today. Just to get their thoughts on potential next steps. And based on, based on, of course, what we heard from from councils and based on what we heard from staff. Based on the feedback we've heard so far, as well as the feedback from local CEOs. There appears to be about two thirds of the member municipalities that are interested in at least further investigating this model. We have received a motion from one of the member municipalities indicating that they do not want to be included in the centralized planning model. And and as counsel will know, the initial intent of the centralized model was developed on the premise of the basis that all member municipalities would be a part of that model. So should council direct staff to continue to proceed with investigating the centralized servicing model? Then staff would need to do some further investigations on whether a hybrid model would still achieve the anticipated efficiencies and that critical mass that would be required in order to make this work. This, this, of course, will require some staff time and resources in order to investigate that further. Another option for council's consideration that was noted in the report is to keep the staffing arrangements as status quo and to focus on other opportunities for planning efficiencies. And those efficiencies, other opportunities were identified in that previous planning staff report that was presented to council earlier this year. Another option is that municipalities could work together. So none of these options prevent any municipality from working together like they're already doing with sharing chief billing officials and billing inspectors between municipalities. So that's also another option that can also be explored at any time between municipalities. If council is interested to continue to move forward with implementing investigating this centralized planning model based on a hybrid approach. Again, with approximately two thirds of the municipalities participating, then staff are happy to continue to to move forward with those investigations. If council directed staff to pause these investigations and focus on other planning efficiencies, again, staff are happy to do that as well. The motion before you today would direct staff to continue investigating the planning officials facilities model based on approximately two thirds of the municipalities potentially participating. The C A O groups also suggested that it'd be beneficial to have a joint council meeting early in the new year so that county staff, we can present the summary of the initial feedback received and to discuss potential next steps. This will, of course, provide an opportunity for all of the county county councillors as well as municipal councillors to hear the information at the same time and to ask any further questions. And that will be a joint council session in in open session. So should council direct staff to have that, county staff will of course work with our municipal CEOs and clerks on a date for that meeting, but we're proposing that to happen early in 2025. Again, happy to take any further questions that council may have, but there's the motion that's before you today is is in the report in order to continue to move forward with investigating the centralized servicing model and to look at that joint open session, joint council session. So happy to take questions.
Thank you, Randy. I see Counselor Bordenio has his hand up and then I'll go to Counselor Nielsen. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you and good morning, County Council. You know, when we sit here, we sit here with our regional hats on and our county councillor hats on, but I've been requested by my council and council chambers this week to reiterate a motion that was passed at our local council table in regards to the centralized planning. And what they'd like to see included would be a hybrid phased approach for this model. Start with the lower tiers that would benefit from the model. And then the opportunity for monitoring feedback and evaluation. So I I'm seeing in this motion, it doesn't have any consideration for a hybrid model as well. And I would like to see that my, sorry, I would, the council of Towneble Mountains would like to see that included as a as an option throughout this motion. So I just didn't know Randy's feedback on on that.
Okay, Randy, please.
Through you, Warden, and thank you for that question, Counselor Bordenio. So the the, I guess, the second part of that motion is implied to be more of a investigating a hybrid model essentially. So right now, as as noted, there's a, we've, based on the feedback that we've heard and received and the discussions that we've had with the CEO groups. There's approximately two thirds of the member municipalities that we're aware of that are at least interested in investigating this model further. So again, we know that we're in a hybrid model because as as Counselor Bordenio indicated, Towneble Mountains is not interested in participating at this time on the centralized planning model, but this would be looking at investigating a hybrid model where we're providing, where the county would provides planning services to some of the local municipalities. And and some would be maintaining status quo based on what's what's exist today.
Thank you, Randy. Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Millen. I would have no problem myself putting the motion that's presented from staff on the floor, but I do have a comment to make. I think when we look at doing this joint meeting, i- if this does move forward, we need to make sure that there's enough time to give the council members the chance to ask questions. I think that there were some comments from the last one that there was a little bit of a too firm of a deadline because of other things that had to happen on a particular day. And I think we need to make sure we're open to having a full conversation and a full dialogue if we're trying to make sure that not only are we getting buy in if if this is the direction that the member municipalities want to go, but that we understand the risks and opportunities that might be happening. And I appreciate that the report here is coming and asking for that opportunity to really just, okay, let's get the answers out there and see. You know, are we all interested or how many, what would a hybrid model look like and and ask some of those questions? So I'm fine with moving the motion as presented with the caveat that we do have a bit more time to that joint meeting.
I will note that we do have a mover and secondary already. So thank you, Counselor Nielsen. Kim?
Thank you very much, Counselor Nielsen, for raising that point. There's another matter that I will bring up at other business at the end of the meeting that would likely be a fulsome conversation with probably members beyond this council directly. And so I'll be raising the question about whether or not we can find a day somewhere where we can both deal with with the planning efficiencies matter for everyone to have a good discussion there as well as the the other piece that I'll bring up at the end of the meeting.
Counselor McQueen, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, I think you, Mr. Warden and County Council, Counselor Nielsen caught most of what I was was saying, but I know when it did come back to our council, it wasn't like we were to make a decision. We were just sending comments in. So a lot of councils, well, they haven't made a decision, at least ours didn't, but we just sent comments in. So.
And that was the intent. Absolutely. Anyone else have any other questions? Counselor Greg?
Thank you. Through you, Warden. I was actually going to speak to that exact commentary from the report in September. I'm actually disappointed that a municipality did pass a motion because that report stated a municipal decision is not required at this stage, but rather the county is seeking input in the following from member municipalities. We're trying to endeavor to go down a path that's in the best interest of all the municipalities in Gray County and serve the residents as best as we can. We have a structure now where we try to recoup a lot of the fees for development and planning as as they're incurred. We do have and we need to recognize the active role that we have in in the cost of housing by the flow through of these charges. My question is, in the lead, in some of the materials leading up, we had a comparative analysis in terms of our staffing complement in Gray County within planning departments, two peers across the county. That would be interesting information to have it further shared in a public realm in some way, shape or form so that it can be seen the actions that the county is trying to endeavor upon here to mitigate or respond, mitigate costs, respond to the services that are required and assess how we compare to our peers across the province. I'm certain some of it could be blacked out. It's always evolving. Rules are changing within municipalities. We know that firsthand right now. However, that said, if that document, that information can come back forward when we have that next meeting, so it is in the public realm. It should also include if municipalities state that while we have an unfilled rule right now. The question then is, is that unfilled rule in your 2025 budget because you're still looking to fill it? In which case it should still be captured in your reporting bag. So it would be interesting to have that knowledge or that information as part of that report.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions? Oh, Randy, go ahead.
Through you, Warden. Thank you for that question, Counselor Greg. Yeah, we're happy to look at providing information in terms of what's the current kind of state of the nation as it as it relates to the planning services that are provided and the planning staff that that's exists in our current current model, so to speak. So we're happy to provide that information as part of the the next report. As noted, it's it's always like a snapshot in time when we do take it, but we're happy to try to incorporate some of the the information that as you've noted is what's currently in terms of the the number of planners that we have working within the county and the municipalities. And then how many, if there's any that are proposed within the budget as well. And then that information will be required anyways in order to determine if, again, if we're moving forward with a centralized servicing model and a hybrid approach even. Looking at what's then the the planners that would be maybe part of that centralized model if if we were to move forward as such.
Thank you, Randy. Not seeing any further question. Oh, sorry, Counselor Bordenio, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. I'd like to move an amendment to the main motion to include, including the hybrid option. Some somewhere in the first sentence, in the first paragraph. I feel much more comfortable with if that wording was actually in the main motion. To investigate the planning efficiencies, including a hybrid staffing model as an option based on approximately two thirds.
Okay, we're, Tara's just crafting a motion to that effect or an amendment, rather. We got it up there. Maybe read it for the benefit of everyone.
So that the motion be amended to include a hybrid model as well for consideration and investigation.
Yes, thank you.
That captures your motion, Peter?
Yes, Mr. Warden, thank you.
Very good. Is there a secondary for that? Counselor Matrasov, thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Greg?
May staff comment on whether that was considered early on and why it may have been disregarded as part of the process to this point?
Yeah, so when we initially started looking at this this potential model, we were, again, it was based on the premise of of all municipalities maybe participating was part of that overall model. At this stage, we've only just done a preliminary assessment or review of what a what a hybrid model might look like. And so again, we're happy to, subject to the direction from councils, they investigate that further to see if that's a gonna still achieve that critical mass and those efficiencies that we anticipated if all of us would be part of that model. So we're happy to investigate that for sure.
Thank you, Randy. Any other questions on the amendment? Call the vote. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed, if any? That is carried. Now we're back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Scott. Moving on to the next report, we have a report here from Purchasing regarding the policy update. Mike Alguire is here this morning to speak to that report. Morning, Mike, and welcome. The floor is yours, sir. I need a mover and secondary first. Counselor Echols? Counselor Patterson, thank you.
Thank you, Warden Millen, and good morning, County Council. This report we have brought forward today is recommending some changes to the county's purchasing policy. The policy was last updated in early 2020 and it's recommended that a review takes place every five years. I want to acknowledge the support I have received in this rewrite from a few groups and individuals during a two day lean workshop held in August this past summer with some key staff members present. It was very evident that staff is looking for and eager to see some changes to a few items in the policy. And we use that feedback to formulate some of these proposed changes. I also want to acknowledge the great amount of assistance received from the county's buyer, Sherry Adams, who's in the gallery today. Her eye towards detail and ensuring consistency in this rewrite has been very much appreciated by myself. And just recently, we were able to share some of these updates with our senior management team. And the feedback there was favorable and supportive. I should also mention that the proposed changes were not only made in consultation with staff here at Gray. We researched many other like counties to tap into their best practices and understand where the trends are going with limits and authorization amounts. So I have a very brief PowerPoint presentation that kind of summarizes what's in the report. So we'll go through some purchasing limit changes, some proposed changes to the award authorizations. We did add a few items that are in the reporting to council section. We've eliminated one thing in particular and updated some other clauses and then we've added IT clause with the nuances that surround purchasing IT software. So with an eye towards the principles of purchasing, of course, and that is open, fair and transparent decision making. Getting right into the limit update. It's currently, we currently allow staff to procure anything between zero and $5,000. We're recommending we change that to get more in line with today's economy as well as trying to gain some efficiencies and getting things looked after quickly. These low dollar purchases can sometimes the procurement or the competition doesn't always lend itself to gaining any cost saves when all is considered. That was definitely a key takeaway from from key staff at the lean management session this summer. In conjunction with moving to twenty thousand dollars, we're suggesting we eliminate what's in the policy now, which is called informal bidding. Uh where staff is allowed to get three quotes without um cons- without, I guess, oversight by purchasing. We're suggesting that anything between twenty and seventy-five thousand now gets handled by purchasing, so it's kind of a. I guess a check and balance in the in the elimination of the informal bid process. And there's no change to what we consider uh a public um document. Anything over seventy-five thousand will be listed. Um on our bidding portal as a public document. Um the twenty to seventy-five thousand backing up, that's more by invitation. Um suggestions on who can award, so. Council approves the the uh the budget uh and and when we go out to tender. And we're suggesting that if the re- if the results come back in and we've got a. A compliant bid within budget that the director is uh able to approve. Um currently, directors are approving up to five hundred thousand. And this is an eye specifically to, I guess, transportation in that a lot of their projects. Are in that over five hundred thousand range. We don't have a lot of others. The season is short. Uh our thought is it's in the budget. You've already approved it. If the budget, if the. Bids come in within budget, let's save that. Four to five week timeframe and getting it approved and and get get going. Uh of course, um. It will come back to you for discussion if needed uh on the quarterly. And that financial section of the quarterly will summarize where the costs, of course, are coming from if needing in if need be. Um we're suggesting that anything over budgeted over seventy-five thousand that is over budget must be approved by the Director of Finance and further anything twenty percent or more must be approved by. The Director of Finance and and the CIO. It doesn't all, it doesn't mean that a report may not necessarily be recommended by the CIO or the Director of Finance. If if the money's not there or things need to be moved around or. When there's nothing in the purchasing policy that allows staff to eliminate a project to to support another one, so that would be a council report, of course. And I guess I mentioned that everything's going to come back in this in the quarterly. Currently see things between seventy-five thousand and five hundred. You'll see everything over seventy-five. These are things we added to a section within the policy. Um some of them are obvious. Um. Of course, if provincial or federal government requires council to approve. It's worth noting that if the award cannot be accommodated within the approved budget line item or requires council approval budget transfer. Or if there's any pre-commitment to a future year's budget. Uh again, as I just alluded to, if the CIO and the Director of Finance deem it to be in the county's best interest, it will come to you. For your approval. And the last uh item there uh was always in the policy. It just wasn't in this section, but any single resource source over seventy-five thousand is approved by. Council. Uh so just uh. For for clarification, we've eliminated uh the section on fees. We haven't charged fees for our. Purchasing documents in. Over ten years um with the electronic age, everything's uh free for anyone to download um off of our bidding portal. Uh as I mentioned, we've eliminated the informal bids. Purchasing will now handle anything twenty thousand and over. And we've had to rewrite a few sections, most specifically vendor performance dispute resolution, suspension of bidders and accessibility. A few of those we've never had to real um. I guess use it and administer it, but um they did require a little bit of uh tightening up, so we've done that. And finally, just uh a note on IT, we've um. We've uh added um some some clauses in there that the staff will follow as far as making sure. Um that the Director of IT um has looked at the design specifications for anything IT related. There's some talk about the cyber. Uh security as well as um. Just making sure that if there's uh any. Uh software that's going to touch our our. I guess infrastructure that there'll be a non-disclosure agreement signed. That's the end of the of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions about this or the report or the uh the policy. Uh rewrite was added uh to the package as well, so.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions? Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. More- uh Mr. Warden, and and thank you, Mike, for your for your report. Couple of comments, couple of questions. Um. So it it did say in the report that not necessarily lowest price will be accepted. I read that right. And I know from experience in our council, there was a situation where there was a tender came in, the lowest price was recommended by staff. But we didn't go with that recommendation because it was a supplier that was closer closer by. And for the difference, if there was a warranty issue, it made sense to go local because if there was a warranty issue, anyway, council had to make that decision. So I do feel that the five hundred thousand in place should be kept. I I know that from a situation, if something arose. I mean, it 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 would put that decision on county council to make that and take that off staff because I think that was something if if there was a a a an issue. Puts it on, you know, staff are are caught in the crosshairs where we as elected officials make that decision and I. You know, when you get over half a million dollars, that's we're talking. Especially if the if there was a performance issue or something that was being recommended that, you know. And and we have seen those quotes come in or open up those quotes, those uh tenders come in really close. Like really close, like I don't know how how like it's almost too close, like you just. So again, you could get into a situation where it could be a. A discussion or debate or or whatever. I just think that as we as elected officials just went on that. Big ticket items, I think we should be finalizing, and I understand timing is is a concern as well. But I just think from if a circumstance arose, it's it's elected officials that. Make the decision and it doesn't it 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 takes it off the uh staff. Oh, just my comment on that part.
Thank you. Yeah, Counselor Greg?
Uh thank you and through you, Warden. Uh I would echo largely those comments. In fact, I'll move a motion uh that. Move an amendment that the five hundred thousand dollar limit be uh kept as is currently. Um I see, I understand. There's other comparators out there that we can look at and this is what they do. But you get to a certain point where you get into these other comparators and they have full-time counselors. And it's the full-time office they have, and in many cases they have staff. And they can go through and they are acutely aware of every or should be. Aware of every spending initiative. Um I don't think we have um. That same fine uh line of sight at times when we're just approving the portfolio, the uh the budget. Uh in its entirety at the start of the year and then uh providing that type of flexibility. I think it should be maintained at five hundred thousand. Items do come back to council. For that final say, we have meetings every two weeks by and large, so it's not. That impactful to timelines. Um we haven't had significant budget inter or work interruptions. In the last two years that I've seen, uh that would convince me that this change is needed. And yes, I understand, we go through lean. Processes and and they can inform that, but these lean processes sometimes are born out of private sector. And they are applied to private sector in a much different way or in a much different fashion than they are in public. Uh in the public realm. We have a fiduciary duty and responsibility to the taxpayer and. To walk away from that five hundred thousand dollar level of oversight, I see as abdicating that rule. Uh we should be maintaining it.
So I'll just ask Tara to read the amendment that she has constructed here, just to make sure it captures what you want.
And so the motion would be that the uh motion be amended to direct staff to. Include the five hundred thousand dollar limit for council approval in the draft purchasing policy to be brought forward to council.
Okay, with that, Counselor Greg, is there a second here for that amendment? Counselor McQueen? Discussion on the amendment? Absolutely, Kim, go ahead.
Uh two things, just to confirm that what we're discussing here. Is um in bringing a ro- continuing, I should say, continuing to bring a report to council. For procurements valued at over five hundred thousand dollars. Where that item, that project is in the approved budget. Nobody, I just want to be very clear to anyone who who might be listening or otherwise. Staff in no way are asking for carte blanche to approve projects. That weren't already approved with an assigned budget. And um you know, in the annual plan for that particular department with a very specific set of deliverables. That is part of our ten-year capital plan or otherwise. So what you're asking is that we continue to bring a second report back to council. To ensure that you are aware that a particular high-value project has in fact. The procurement has taken place, and this is just a second level of of um. Confirmation about how the procurement proceeded and what the value of the winning. Bid was, et cetera. Just just to be clear there and um we can make that um or actually it would be to retain that language in. The updated purchasing policy. So we would be keeping things as they are now. Um and so maybe the the language, Tara, is to um. Retain retain the five hundred thousand dollar report to council. Clause in the purchasing policy. Yeah, thanks.
I would just make a comment. Just in terms of a frame framework here. I agree with the comments there, but. At the Budget and Finance Committee. In the past week, we just gave pre-budgetary pre-approval on projects well north of ten million dollars. And that's the way it should be. That's a proper budget and finance committee functioning. But I am pretty assured that there's thirteen counselors. Uh unless you've got a really good memory going back a year. Are not aware of what those projects that we just gave pre-budget approval to um to go out to tender. Um for the two thousand twenty-five budget when you were debating or considering the two thousand twenty-four, so I would leave that with council. As a perfect example of, I think, why you should still have that level of oversight.
Okay, so we have the amendment moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the amendment? Counselor Queen- McQueen?
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and I did use the the reasons for why I raised it was because there could be areas of. Of closeness or not necessarily the lowest price is what is to be awarded. Also, especially if you had a four million dollar project. And say it was it was uh council-approved budget at four million, but it came in twenty percent over. Uh twenty percent over four million is is what's that eighty thou- eight hundred thousand? Right in my math right there? That's that's a big, you know, there's an example right there, too. So I think it's important that we leave it in, Mr. Warden, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? That carries. So we're now back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? Count- uh Counselor Echols?
Uh thank you and through you to uh Mike. He said on that, and that's the twenty percent or ten percent overages. Um would be by the Director of Finance. Anything would have to be approved. Twenty percent over Director of Finance and the CEO. But it wouldn't require, it may require. A back to council. With this last part in. At twenty percent, would it be a report back to council? Be required?
Mike?
I'm not sure I understand your question. So anything over five hundred thousand, awarded over five hundred thousand will come back to council no matter what. Uh according to the amendment. Um so anything under five hundred thousand, we have in the policy right now that if it's twenty percent or more over. It's similar uh language, the CIO and the Director of Finance approve it. That's between seventy-five and five hundred thousand. So though that will continue with this amendment. But the comment about or the any any twenty percent over budget with regards to anything over five hundred thousand becomes. It's no longer applicable, if I understand correctly.
Um under the current policy, um. And 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 again, under the under what's being proposed here today. You're getting a quarterly purchasing report. And in that quarterly purchasing report, it always tells you this was the budget. This was the award amount, and if there was some discrepancy there between those two amounts, there's some explanation of. How this is intended to be dealt with. Um where the discretion piece comes in, like when you get the quarterly repurchasing report, you're looking at things that have happened. Where there's some discussion is about whether or not. There's enough of a question that we don't even want to make the award. Without getting input from council. And so how the process has worked up till like up till now is that there's a conversation. Um between Mary Lou and I and whoever on the senior management team has got the issue. And we make a decision about whether or not we have a very. Clear and and straight path to dealing with the challenge that we see or whether it definitely needs to come back to council because. It's really not something that has been discussed and and we would be concerned that we do in fact need your input before we proceed. Um and every situation is is somewhat unique. I think in my mind, the bottom line is though. There is transparency always in you knowing what happened. And so. When I think about these things, I think you're gonna know anyway. And is it better for you to have that conversation before we award? Is there something about this particular situation that's concerning? We need to have that conversation first? Or have we got a fairly straightforward um process before us here and it will be, it will be okay? To continue on as we do, but then make sure that it's there's an expla- explanation to all of you in that quarterly purchasing report.
Counselor Echols?
Yeah, and that's probably was looking between that seventy-five and five hundred. It's kind of an optional. I would, you know, further see it, rather see it, if it is over twenty percent. I want to see a report back here. One. Mr. Greg's point. It's in the budget. Staff give us this. What, you know, we approved it. And now all of a sudden we're twenty percent or more over. I want to know ahead of time, not a quarterly. That maybe we had a report, maybe we get a report, or maybe we don't. As you get the quarterly purchasing report, but there's nothing stating, from my understanding in the policy, that says. Staff will give us a report back. That's over five hundred thousand, absolutely. And I would like to see that on the twenty percent. Uh at the twenty percent. There's, you know, a variance, but at that twenty percent between seventy-five and a hundred. I want to see a report back here. Okay, so that would be an amendment to what you have in here. Where where I'm reading it, it's kind of optional. You may see a report. We may not. I'm saying. I want it absolute. If it's over twenty percent, we will have a report before it's awarded.
So you're making that as an amendment? Okay, so you're a second here for that? Counselor Nielsen? The section of the amendment, Counselor McQueen?
More or less a a co- thank you, Mr. Warden, a comment and clarity. Sometimes market conditions can can drive things up. For example, our dollar's down, you're buying a piece of equipment that's coming out of the. You know, states, it could be, there's a market condition that could affect that. So I've got two scenarios. I just wonder if you could give me a comment from staff. So say you had, you were going out to purchase something and you had. Five um returns and the lowest one was twenty percent, thirty percent, thirty-five, you know. That scenario versus uh one bid at twenty percent over. What would the scenario be differently there? How would that how would that be addressed? Because obviously. What would the scenario be differently there? How would that, how would that be addressed? Because obviously, if you had five um submissions. And the lowest one was twenty percent, that could give you a real good indication that maybe you better take the twenty percent over because it's. It's it's reflecting market conditions or whatever. Or if you had another situation, you only get one or two bids and it, you know, it's twenty. So. It it can you, just give me a little bit of scenario around that, to those two examples.
Mike?
Okay, thanks. Um I s- I hadn't really considered that. So with the amendment that Counselor Echols just put forward. I guess we would talk about it as staff, as our budget good. Uh or did we miss something or is scope scope changed? Um but if we went out to tender between, I'm talking seventy five to five hundred thousand in in line with the amendment. And we had five submissions and they were all, or even a couple of submissions and they were twenty percent over. I guess at that time staff would decide, do we want to bring it to you folks for approval? Or do we not? Do we not have a story? Do we not have money somewhere? Maybe we can't recommend an approval. I I every every situation will be will be different. Uh so not, I'm not sure.
Any further, Counselor Nielsen?
Thank you very much, Warden. I think when I, when I was listening to um Counselor Echols' comments and and the reason for his motion. The, you know, the premise of county council is the financial and fiduciary responsibility. If we're, if we approve a budget and the budget is set at X. And projects are coming in at thirty five, forty percent over those budget marks. And that's what the motion is saying. It's not saying just twenty percent. It's saying anything over twenty percent above budget. You know, council, county council needs to understand that because that budget is our primary policy document. And and that has implications further on deficit possibilities and such. So I I I respect where Council uh. Echols is coming from and and why he's kind of supported. I think anything less than the twenty percent um really doesn't need, I think there's some. There's some logical wiggle room where staff have the authority to spend the money that we have given them. Um but then there's concerns where if we're that far off the mark. Council kind of should know and understand what's happening.
Yeah.
Thank you. And oh, no, Mary Lou and I are, and all the rest of the senior team are completely united around transparency and. Not um interfering at all with the decision making of this council. I would say that um we, what you're talking about now about um compulsory. Um report backs on anything at that over twenty percent thing would be a new level of oversight that. That we haven't had in the past. I think we take our responsibility to keep all of you informed very seriously. And you'll note um what was presented to the last um Budget and Finance Committee. This year, for example, um beyond some additional funding for uh long term care operations. We were within two hundred thousand dollars of our of our overall budget in a surplus position this year. So. I mean, we try to be very, very careful in the way that we manage money. But. I again, if if reports are are deemed to be helpful, we're absolutely prepared to provide them. I'm just saying that this will be a new requirement that we haven't, haven't um done in the past. And um. I hope that there, you haven't ever felt that you were not getting the information that that you record.
Thank you, Kim. Any further discussion? Counselor Echols.
Uh through you, Mr. Warden, just quickly. The whole premise of this is not to question what has been and what will continue in the short term. But this policy is going forward five years. I'm, you know, have no assurance that I'm going to be here in five years. And I don't think any of us, you know, can say it at one hundred percent, we're going to be here in five years. It's, you know. Basically identifying succession planning and whatnot that uh individuals as they're coming in. Uh whether it be on staff or be on council, will be continued to be ma- made aware. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the, where are we at? Well, yeah, we're on the amended motion. No, we have a new amendment, my mistake, sorry. The amendment to uh do as Counselor Echols requested. Sorry, Tara, do you want to read it, please? Just so we can.
That the motion be amended to direct staff to include a requirement in the purchasing policy bylaw to report to council on award amounts greater than the council approved budget by twenty percent or more.
Mike?
Uh ju- thank you, just for uh clarification. So. We, our our goalposts right now are seventy five thousand to five hundred thousand. This is saying. Any budget amount over twenty percent. So if we had twenty thousand dollars for something. I, you know, we're twenty percent over, is that included in this amendment? Or should it be, is there a lower goalpost like seventy five thousand and above? Thanks.
I'll ask the clerk to clarify what she's intending with that amendment.
My apologies, I should have uh noted that that would be for amounts between seventy five and five hundred thousand dollars, I believe, was the intention of the motion.
Okay, we're clear on that? We call the question. All those in favor on the amendment? Opposed if any? That's carried. Now we're back to the original motion as amended. I'm sorry, Mary Lou, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um just for clarification in the amendment. Uh could we have direction whether that is the report to council is in advance of the award? Or after the award?
I think the assumption was that it would be before the award. Yep. Everyone else clear on that one? Do we need to revote or are we good with that? I think we're clear on that. It was prior to the award. Okay, now we're back to the amended motion, the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed if any? That is carried. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate your time and the efforts on that and uh enjoy the rest of the day. Okay, uh we have one item, we'll do the Mary, Anne Marie. Oh, right, we're gonna do the consent item, six G. Yes. Here we go, here we go. Counselor Body, please. He moves the motion. Is there a secondary for that? Counselor Nielsen, thank you so much. Anne Marie.
Uh thank you, Mr. Warden. Um so I can speak a little bit to this report. Um we receive through the um provincial and federal governments uh two funding programs called the Canada Ontario Community Housing Initiative. And the Ontario Priorities Housing Initiative. Um we normally receive the funding amounts before budget. We did not last year. Uh and uh we were very late getting our amounts in this year. Uh and in fact, weren't sure we were going to get the funding. There was a disagreement between the federal and the provincial government. On an opinion, difference of opinion, I guess, as to whether amount uh not the outcomes that were agreed upon were being met. And if they weren't, then there was a chance that the funding would be clawed back from the feds. It worked out uh that we did end up getting the funding. Um we uh put in an investment plan. Our investment plan was um just came back to us. In, I believe it was in October, October ninth. Um however, we wanted to revise the plan because it was a year ago that we made it. And um so we submitted and have received approval for um a revised plan. So with this funding. Um we use the funding for um non capital um portions of it for rent supplements. We have a number of. Um former domiciliary hostels. Uh so for example, Second Ave Ave Lodge in which we provide rent supplements. Um to assist uh in funding people that are staying there and we support seventy individuals through our rent supplements in both the COCHE. And the OFI um annually. Uh there's also funding in there for our uh capital projects. So some of the projects that we're in. Listed in our capital budget would be funded through this. Um they are for our nonprofits, some of them, and for ourselves. Um we use them for elevator repairs, um windows, uh. One off items sometimes such as doors. Um if we have a flooded basement, um so we can use them for certain things that happen throughout the year too. As part of the OFI investment, there is uh ten percent which can be used um to offset supportive staff. Uh and that for for next year will be for, sorry, for this year is forty seven thousand dollars. And we actually allocate that funding to. Uh safe and sound to assist with um our winter shelter program. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Are there any questions? Counselor Body?
I don't have further questions, but I thought it was an important enough uh report to uh to have made publicly for anyone watching. Uh to to hear it, you know, the number one question, I think we, at least in Owens Sound, get is around housing. I assume we all get that. Across the province. So I think it's just important to have it brought out and uh hear the work that's being done. And I don't think we can. Say it enough to uh to tell the world uh what Gray County is doing in housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. You're absolutely right. Any other questions? Okay, call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Anne Marie. Uh okay, there's no closed meeting matters. Kim, you had another item for open session. You want to do that first?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Um this is a little bit of a follow up from the um Leadership Day on Economic Development. One of the things that um we spent some time discussing at that meeting was about. Um the importance of having serviced land available for future projects. Um one of the things that I think we're all acutely aware of is that um. Many of us have, are looking at constraints when it comes to servicing capacity. And also the financial capacity to deal with service expansion, servicing expansions. Um one of the things that uh Dan Matheson spoke to um as having, having been an important ingredient for. Success in Stratford and in other places in Ontario was that they undertook um a partnership. A P three public climate partnership um model in order to um. Move forward with those servicing capacity projects um sooner than they might have been able to otherwise. Um so one of the questions that I had for council this morning was whether or not you would be interested in. Hearing from um one of the public private partnership players um who's worked in Ontario. So this would be. Epcor. Um Epcor has been um making themselves available uh to provide education sessions. To council that really just explain what a P three model is, what, how it works, what the considerations might be. What a P three company would do for you or not do for you. And so if there's interest from council, um they just suggested it would take a couple of hours to go through that. Um and would be very open to having a, you know, a broad open session with anyone who wanted to attend. Um so my question to council was, if we were going to plan a couple of hours um for planning efficiencies and a couple of hours. Uh to talk about P threes, can we find a day, was it, can we find a day where we could come together and and talk about um. Both of those things? So I I will leave that to uh your direction.
Thoughts from council? I don't think we need a motion, but if there's interest in hearing that, Counselor McQueen?
I attended that day and I thought it was a great day and I certainly support that. I I know that that bell curve that's there needs to get wider in the middle. So I certainly support it.
Okay.
Counselor Greg? I just have a a question just to uh get a little bit more information on. On 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 the sites that we're looking for uh in terms of being investment ready. Not being at the event, uh I would presume Perth County would drive or probably drove as much development. Commercial industrial, not more so the industrial is likely what we're talking about here to Stratford. Um what is the role right now or what considerations are given to? Like Owen Sound, for example, we have a lot of serviced industrial employment lands ready to go. Um before we go to like having this meeting, I'm just a little perplexed as to why if we're getting. Uh people knocking on our doors, why we're not seeing it perhaps trickling into Owen Sound. Um because we would appear to be investment ready, uh development ready, shovel ready. Um just wonder if you can just. Are there P threes right now that we could be doing in Owen Sound that, because we've got the land?
Randy, do you want to have a go at that, please? You were at the event.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and and uh thank you for the question, Counselor Greg. Um there's a number of factors, obviously, that go into what what's considered shovel ready lands. Um part of it that we heard, of course, on Thursday, last Thursday was um, you know, making sure that, you know, the lands are. Uh if they're not under public ownership, if they're not owned by the county or the municipality, is there a willing seller uh for some of those lands? So. Um based on some of the analysis that was done by uh staff working with each of your economic development officers and and. And staff at the local municipalities, we we estimate around seven properties or so that are truly investment ready. Across Gray County. Um obviously, we want to dig into some of that information further. We want to have some further conversations with with each of your staff and E D Os. To make sure that, you know, we have, uh I properly identified all those properties and all those opportunities. Um so that when Investment Ontario and others come knocking at the door, we're ready to respond. Because when we heard from Investment Ontario, we have forty eight hours typically. To respond back uh with with a response that they're looking for, uh because that's how quick these things move. Um so, so yeah, we're happy to tap into some of that further. I don't know offhand uh some of that, those those answers to those questions, but we're happy to. Work with, continue to work with your local councils, your staff uh to make sure we're properly identifying what we do have today. And then, of course, putting in a plan and a roadmap, which I think is key to how we can activate some more land going forward.
Thank you, Randy. Kim, do you want to add?
And and just to add that the servicing capacity challenge that uh many of you are facing. Has as much to do with your ability to execute on residential development as it does on commercial industrial. So um. You know, it's it's servicing across the board, that this may be of some value to you or not, but we thought it might be worth. Just getting some additional information about how it could help.
Okay, so I'm seeing a bit of a consensus. Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And just further to Counselor Greg's comments, one of the things that did come out, and I I'm I'm pleased that Owen Sound has this. Uh availability of these lands, but throughout the county, there were other areas of the county that that didn't have it. And uh. They mentioned the Alston, the new uh car plant in Alston, and it's. Supply companies may need to be within a one hour of Alston. So those are just considerations that the. The companies are looking for. They may have uh restraints on the distance away from other supply chains that uh they have to be conscious of. So. We need these spots throughout the entire county. Uh it's good that Owen Sound has them, but we need them throughout the entire county. Thanks.
Okay. All right, well, thanks for that. So I guess the final order of business this morning is the warden's closing address. So good morning. Well, actually, it's afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. As we gather here today, I want to take a moment to reflect in the past year, a year marked by challenges, perseverance and progress. It has been an incredible honor to lead this council for a second consecutive term and a third term overall. Serving as your warden continues to be one of the greatest privileges of my life. And I deeply gra- and I'm deeply grateful for the trust you have placed in me. No two years are ever the same, and this one is no exception. While we faced our share of challenges, what stands out most is how this council has remained united in its purpose. To advance the strategic priorities of Gray County. Together, we have worked collaboratively, focusing on what matters most to the people and communities we serve. Now, as I sit in the warden's chair for the final time, uh I will take a few moments to reflect on the year that was. The hurdles we've overcome and the strides we've made to build a stronger, more vibrant Gray County. As the term began, as was noted a couple of times here today, we were confronted with one of the most challenging budget positions Gray County has faced in several years. The decisions before us were not easy and required significant. The decisions before us were not easy and required significant thought, careful consideration, and a commitment to the priority set by this council. Together, we debated and worked to balance the immediate needs of our community through the long with the long-term sustainability of our services. Through collaboration, open dialogue, and a shared vision, we arrived at a budget that positioned Gray County to move forward effectively. We ensured that essential services would be delivered at the levels our residents depend on while laying the groundwork for a strong and resilient future. This achievement reflects the strength and dedication of this council, united in its focus on serving the people of Gray County. This council has made important and long-lasting decisions this year. In the winter, we issued the tender for the construction of the new Rockwood Terrace. In the spring, we awarded it, and it was over five hundred thousand dollars, marking the largest capital project in the history of this county. Since then, ground has been broken, foundations are poured, and the walls are going up as I read this address, although maybe not. Depends on how often you want to work in the snow. This project is bringing even more high-demand, long-term care beds to our community, and will ensure the county-run long-term care services remain in southern Gray County for decades to come. It was a long road to get where we are, and we should all be proud watching this project come to life. The Rockwood Terrace project is far from our only investment this year, we're also enhancing our paramedic services with a new base in Durham, collaborating with West Gray and building in tandem with their new police station. This year, we invested millions of dollars to maintain our roadways, making them safer for the residents, businesses, and visitors who travel them every day. Projects this year included sections of Gray Roads nine, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, and forty, and culminated with the opening of our newest roundabout this fall at one of our busiest intersections on Gray Roads three and four. I commend our transportation service staff, both here in the office and out on the roads for their commitment to community safety. Here in Owen Sound, we celebrated the grand official opening of the Sidonum Campus. As we all know, the campus has been operating for a few years now, but this past summer, we reached the pivotal milestone in our vision for the campus when the Gray Brews Makerspace opened its doors. The Sidonum Campus is Gray County's hub for entrepreneurs and a true resource for the region. It was a pleasure cutting the ribbon, touring the spaces, and meeting with the staff, volunteers, and tenants working out at the campus, which includes Georgian Campa- or Georgian College, rather. The Sidonum Campus is proof of Gray County's leadership and commitment to economic prosperity, and it's the envy of other regions. As recently as last week, and we've talked about it a couple times here today, I attended an economic development event at Cobble Beach. I came away from that event inspired. Through leadership and collaboration, not competition, we are building communities for the future. Working on behalf of all our member municipalities, Team Gray is taking a regional approach to economic development, tourism, and culture. Out at Gray Roots, we've been celebrating. Not too hard, but we have been celebrating. This year marked twentieth anniversary of Gray Roots Museum and Archives, and it has been a privilege as warden to participate in several events out there this evening or this year, celebrating this milestone. I always enjoy my my visits to the museum and having a chance to meet with staff and volunteers and speak with residents who are passionate about our history and telling our stories. Over the past year, we have also worked to support the marginalized members of our community. Like much of the coun- country, Gray County is experiencing an opioid epidemic, I knew I'd stumble on that. We are also seeing a record-high number of people experiencing homelessness or at risk of becoming homeless. These are complex issues, some would say wicked problems, with several contributing factors and no simple solutions. Regardless, we are committed to doing what we can to support those in need in improving the health and well-being of all members of our community. In January this year, we had the opportunity to make a bold decision, and we purchased a motel. This acquisition provides us with twenty-two additional rooms to support individuals and families who have nowhere else to go. And on a day like today, people need a place to go. It also creates a place where we can meet with clients, build relationships, and offer them better access to the support they need. In the community, we've also been con- we've also seen continued success and growth in participation in the SOS program. Make no mistake, SOS is saving lives. Not only is SOS making a positive difference, it's also being recognized and replicated in other places. I'm proud of Gray County's participation in this crucial initiative, and I'm grateful for the support of all partners and supporting agencies. Over the past two years, I've had the good fortune of meeting Chief Najuan, he's chief of NAWASH, at many events, and hearing him speak with wisdom and conviction. His call for reconcili action deeply resonates with me, as it reminds us that words without actions are just words. Building meaningful relationships with First Nations communities is not only the right thing to do, it's the foundation for mutual understanding and progress. To honor, to truly honor reconciliation, we must act with intention and commitment. Remember to be a friend before you need a friend. Although we've made significant strides, there is still much work to be done on many issues. I know our staff are passionate about making a difference, and I'm confident that this council will continue to act where and when needed. Everything I've outlined just now only scratches the surface of the accomplishments from the past year and the great work happening daily across our Gray County. None of this would be possible without our terrific staff. The dedication I see as warden, from the back offices to the front lines, is truly special. Simply put, our staff care and care deeply, which is why they go above and beyond the line of duty, whether responding to an emergency, helping a client, driving a snowplow, or helping the warden with another IT issue. Thank you, Jody. I commend CEO Kim Wingrove and the senior management team and everyone on staff for the hard work they do day in and day out. It has been a pleasure working with all of you. I also want to thank you, county council, for the confidence you have placed in me and the support you have given me over the past two years. We're a pretty good team, I think, and as you've heard me say many times before, I truly believe we are stronger together. Everyone around this table is here to represent people of Gray County, and everyone around this table has ideas and opinions to share. So as we enter the back half of our term, I encourage all of you, and I mean all of you, to stay engaged and use your voices as we tackle the challenges ahead of us. Finally, I want to thank my family for their support over the past two years, and someone would wonder why aren't they here, but anyway, whatever. They're all busy. Taking on this job of warden means being away from home quite a bit. In fact, using a bit of cowboy math, Kayla figures that I have traveled over fifty thousand kilometers representing so- or Gray County in the last two years. Trains, planes, and automobiles. Deb even remarked that maybe I should start looking for a new truck, uh I think I better hurry with that before she sees what they cost. As we reflect on the accomplishments of this past year, we must always look forward with optimism and a shared determination to tackle the uncertainties ahead of us. Gray County has always risen to challenges through resilience and collaboration. And the work we do together has a profound impact on the lives of our residents. Let us continue to embrace diverse perspectives, listen, and act with purpose to build even stronger, more connected community, because in all that we do, one thing remains true. We are stronger together. Thank you, Mercy McGwet. Councillor Eccles?
Would be appropriate to make a motion that uh your closing address be included and endorsed in the minutes of the November twenty-eighth meeting.
That indeed would be in order, councillor Debrin, you'll second that? Thank you, any discussion? All I had to ask, all those in favor? Thank you. All right, back to the agenda, which I believe we have, oh, one more thing. Notice a motion, do we have any notice of motion? I do not see any. Yep, okay, the clerk wishes the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, if I could ask you to move to the podium and accompany Deputy Mayor McQueen for the presentation of the warden's pin.
I will say, in regards to the visibility, and I appreciate you making that observation, Paul. Um, Kayla sometimes would book me into stuff, and she said, well, she asked me, do you do you really think you need to go to this, because you're going to this, 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 and I said, Kayla, if they take the time to invite me, if I can be there, I want to be there. Um, it's just, it was, it really is, the best best part of the job is getting out into the county and seeing the people and uh without I, you know, it's a far different job than MP or MPP, but but those two guys, they do sort of the same thing, but they got all the partisan stuff to go with it, the warden has the ability to avoid all the partisan stuff, so it that makes it more fun. In any case.
So I think it was last April, you called me, I was in the barn with the cattle, and you're saying, where is everybody at this meeting in Markdale, and I said, oh, look, I changed it two weeks later, and I guess you didn't get them, so you even attended when you weren't supposed to attend.
I did not get the memo on that one, but anyway, thank you for answering the phone, because I was thinking, where the hell is everybody? Anyway, we have a motion to adjourn on the table, councillor Debrin, second, councillor McQueen, all those in favor? We're adjourned, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, lunch is on, apparently, yes, it is.